Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, our first meeting of the new year. Heather, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Schindler?
Present.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Here.
Mr. Reppert?
Here.
Mr. Eiffelies?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. As we all just learned, we have a new legal counsel. I'd like to welcome Bridget Matheny to our group here, and she'll be with us on a regular basis. One of the things that I wanted to do tonight, I talked to Heather about this, is I'm going to rearrange the agenda just a little bit because we have some old business that we have to work through. And as a courtesy to, I believe you gentlemen are probably for the Career Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As a courtesy to our guests that are here tonight from Cold Harbor, we're going to let them go first, and then they don't have to go through all the wordsmithing of our zoning amendments. So, and then we'll, so I'm going to rearrange the agenda. We're going to do one item of new business first, and that is the document we have in front of us for revising the site plan for the building at the Career Center over on Girdle Road. So, and then we'll go back to our, we'll reopen our public hearing that we had from last month, and we'll go through the public hearing, and then we'll close that out, we'll vote on that, and then we'll go through the other items on our agenda. So, without further ado, let's, which one of you gentlemen are going to speak? If you'd give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Dale Ripas, Cold Harbor Building Company.
Okay.
I live at 11651 Cherry Hollow Drive.
Sure.
Jeff Slavkovsky, Executive Director, Auburn Career Center, 8140 Auburn Road.
Okay, I see one.
S.L.A.V.K.O.V.S.K.Y. Mr. Peterson, thank you for rearranging the agenda.
No problem, Jeff. Just for you, buddy. So, if you gentlemen would maybe give us an overview of, I believe what we're looking at tonight is a change of plans from something that we had pre-proved last year.
I'll immediately bring my display board into the room.
Okay.
Got that set up just for it. Been doing construction for a very long time, and post-COVID prices on, went skyrocket. And the last time we were here, we had a well-appointed, nice building that was a little over 15,000 square feet, and it came in about $1 million over budget. The school has a fixed budget on this. They were able to secure a loan based on a $3 million amount, and that's what we're shooting for. So, we had to trim quite a bit out of the job. We cut about 5,000 square feet out of the building, but still give them all the amenities. They, I apologize. They originally had, that 5,000 square feet was going to be the administrative offices for the school that were going to be in there, and that got all cut out. So, now it's just public safety training. I'm not trying to kill you. It's all public safety training. There'll be the three service bays. It's a, all the schools at Auburn are lockdown facilities, so the only real ways into the building are through the front door, and then there'll be one other key card door over here for the teachers into the apparatus bay. Going to be three large classrooms and three large apparatus bays, and then the facilities for that locker room, shower, bathroom. The school has been growing leaps and bounds, which is a very good thing. Enrollment's up quite a bit, and enrollment is greatly increasing in two areas, which is, one is public safety, and the other is the healthcare, which they're getting ready to do a project that they got money from the state to greatly improve their healthcare programs there as well.
Okay. So, the main changes really have to do with the size of the building, and a little bit of the exterior decor.
Yes, sir. And we were, we were able, because the administrative offices weren't in there, if you remember, there was a small parking lot on the backside. We were able to get rid of that, cut that cost out.
Okay. Any questions from the Senate Commission?
Your plans, have you updated these plans since, since we, since we got them?
No.
No. Well, you've got a number of discrepancies. The legend on page C50, layout plan?
Okay.
I don't have any indication on this drawing as to where we have lawn and heavy-duty asphalt. No indication whatsoever.
Okay. Well, the only thing that is parking lot is, what's shown on here is parking lot. Everything is grass lawns landscaping. We did submit a landscaping plan.
Yeah, I see that. But again, I don't see any heavy-duty asphalt. Does it go beyond this building at all?
The instant, the parking lot?
The, well, the driveway does.
Yes.
But it, the heavy-duty asphalt, how, what's the extent of that?
That'll be called, right now, we're updating all the drawings. It's actually out for bid right now. So, the permit set caught up with the rest of this set. So, there'll be heavy-duty asphalt in the turnaround area, and then basically the large back bay for the trucks to come in and out of the apparatus, and heavy-duty will be that path, which is for the trucks and for car traffic as well.
So, it won't go beyond this building?
No, sir. This is the existing driveway, and this is the existing horticulture building.
Is there any, any change to the highway, to the driveway going out to Girdle?
No, sir. No, we just abut it. We don't, it doesn't get redone or changed.
And that'll take the heavy traffic?
Yes, sir. It has taken the heavy traffic. The horticulture building has trucks back there all the time.
Okay.
There's a fire training field back there that has trucks back there all the time.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, it did just get repaved.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, and all replaced with heavy-duty.
Okay.
The drive did.
Next page. C... C80, is that what it is? Next page. 60.
Six.
60. Upper left-hand corner, inside the building. What is PR? Inside the building, where the lines come out?
Oh, yeah. Those are the proposed six-inch sanitary lines coming out.
Yeah, but what is PR inside the building?
Proposed. It just, if you read the whole thing, you look closely, it says PR period six-inch sanitary. Proposed six-inch sanitary.
Okay. Thank you. Now, if we go to page C7.0, your building is still 15,000 square feet?
Yes, that's been fixed on the actual permit drawings. Thank you.
All right. Let's check and let's see what this is.
You're catching most of the things I caught with Doug already, but keep going.
Oh, Hyrum is good.
Oh, yeah.
He is, pays a lot of attention to detail.
I don't know if I have anything else. Let's check to see whether highlights are.
The retention pond was recalculated. It was able to get a little bit smaller based on the reduction without the parking for the administrative parking.
That is okay. Okay. I've gotten educated from the fire truck people. Are the turn radiuses on LP.1, or, well, in fact, the whole area. The turn radius is okay, coming into the parking lot and into the building, and then back out again?
On LP?
Well, I, my notes here is turn radius for fire trucks on LP1, LP dot 1. It's on all of them, but...
Oh, okay.
That's just where I put my comment.
Yes, that was calculated last time. So, ostensibly, that back of the building hasn't changed with the apparatus bay.
Okay.
And the parking lot, the services that hasn't changed on that side of the building from what we had last time. And yes, Doug did, we had to look at what type of equipment that they had, so we could make sure that the bays were deep enough, and then Doug was able to get the turning radiuses off of that and run the calculations for how, why we needed to make that in the back.
And then also coming off the main dri, the main highway?
Yes.
The main driveway?
Their, their access, their access drive, yes.
Okay. So, we, you don't plan on having a hook and ladder coming in there? A big, long one?
They won't have one.
No? Okay.
I will caution anybody that wants to park their nice car near that, that these are 18-year-old kids in school driving fire trucks.
I'll park them by the horticulture building sometime soon. All right. Thank you. That's mine.
Yes, sir.
How about you, Heather?
Yes, sir.
Anything else from the Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, few questions.
Sorry, Rich.
I did not review the prior one, but I'm going by recollection. Could you describe, Dale, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is the retention basin designed to be wet? Will it be a wet pond, and then the storage is above it? Is this going to be?
There's, it goes through two phases. There's a temporary phase in the beginning that has the riser pipe until it gets settled, and then at the end, there's a bottom pad, and it's designed to decelerate over a period of time. So, yes, it would be wet, but it's not a standing wet pond.
Yeah. No, I understand that. What I was saying is whether the storage is, you're going, it's going to be a pond, and the storage is above. You're not making a pond. It's going to be a dry basin?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
It's just a retention, it's a retention basin.
Yeah. So, okay. So, some retention bases are designed to...
Have a static level.
Yeah, have a static level. Very good. And then the discharge, again, looking at the site plan, is, appears to traverse another property. Is that, or is that all Auburn Career Center property?
We were going to dump all the water on the lady's lawn next door.
Oh, right, right. And you know her.
The thing that's hard to discern from this is that the volume, it's best if you could go to the C6 that gentleman pointed out, and that allows you to see what the entire facility is back there.
No, I understand it. I'm just asking, is that not a property line? The discharge pipe is traversing a property line to somebody else's property, the discharge of the basin?
The...
Discharge of the basin?
There, if you, the, they own all the property back there.
Oh, okay.
Adjacent property that we own.
Okay. That's, that's my question. Thank you.
Rich, if you look at C3?
Oh, yeah. You see in that?
You see the discharge?
Yes. So, that's all, it does, it, there's like a total of...
I thought that was a property line, but now I see it's, it's Auburn on the other.
It's all Auburn. There is, there is still multiple property lines back there.
I see that.
But they're all Auburn.
And then one final, noting the site plan on C8 includes, I presume you're addressing some sanitary issues with your horticulture, with the other building? Is that also part of the project? So, we're building this, but the sanitary, you're building a lift station and a san, you're connecting sanitary from an existing building?
Okay, we're not addressing any problems, okay? What we're doing is utilizing the discharge that's already going across what we call there the land bridge that crosses over to the main campus buildings, okay? The existing pump station, grinder pump station ejector that services the horticulture building is old.
Okay.
Like, probably 10 years past end of life, and they keep it limping along. So, what we're doing now is we're actually going to put a nice brand-new one that's sized for both facilities in.
Okay.
And then intercept where it comes out of the horticulture building and gravity-feed the sewer into that new one as well. So, both facilities will be serviced from the one new $57,800 pump station.
Oh, you got that right down to the finish.
Yeah, I got a quote for it today.
Yeah, that was, my question just is what other improvements are being done infrastructure-wise on the site? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else from up here? I do have in my hand a report, a staff report that we have, and it indicates a couple of things. First of all, the City of Painesville has indicated there's plenty of water for your capacity, the capacity that you need.
Yeah, they had it for the past, for the previous one as well.
Right. And Lake County Department Utilities indicated wastewater treatment plant that its services project has the capacity. So, you're good there. From the Concord Township Fire Department, we say, we have two comments. Your site plan conforms to the required water supply requirements. All private fire water mains must meet requirements of NFPA 24, and I'm assuming you know that. The fire department will accept a wall-mounted fire department connection for this building. It is required to have a five-inch stores fitting with a 30-degree turn-down, 36 inches above the ground. Is that understood and agreeable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other says, your site plan conforms to the required access, and the fire department looks forward to your building plans. And then from the staff, Heather's in staff, they recommend a conditional approval of your site plan review with the following conditions. Number one, update your layout plan to make sure the legend and the plan match regarding heavy-duty pavement areas and lawn areas, which we kind of talked about.
I may have heard something about that.
Yeah. Number two, clarify on plans that the proposed parking lot shall be improved with asphalt or concrete and not gravel. Number three, revise your landscape plan to show that all ground-based mechanical equipment is screened by fencing or by plantings. And that's, I think, understood. Number four, a separate zoning permit will be required for the proposed wall signs. Number five, if any wall-mounted building accent lighting is proposed, plans must be submitted to the township to ensure compliance. Are you doing any lighting?
There'll, I'm sure there'll be some, there is some.
Okay.
Door lighting, manu, you know, safety lighting on the building and over doors.
Okay.
And we can get you what you want on that. Heather did send that to me today earlier, and I did read through it.
Okay, good. Then you're to provide a timetable and schedule for the development of the site. And finally, number seven, revise utility plan to show existing and proposed electric and gas lines. So, all of those are acceptable to you?
I'm absolutely fine with all of them. If not, they've mostly been accommodated.
Okay.
The, the full permit set is into Lake County for permit now. So, for what you see, we're, you know, obviously things like asphalt thicknesses and stuff would need to be called out. That's up on the final revised drawings that were, there was a big push, and one of the last things there was schedule. And schedule is important because the, the $4 million that they were able to get from the State of Ohio to redo the health wing has to be committed to by the end of September, and I need to get the fire people out of that wing so that construction can start. So, I need to get them into this building.
Okay.
So, that's, there's, that's why the, the push to get things done. So, whereas normally we'd like to have everything completely done and drawn when we submit it, we kind of ran a tandem timeline to try and make sure we can make you people happy as well as get it in for permit now for bid.
Very good. Anybody have anything else for these gentlemen? Hey, thank you. So, before we, I entertain a motion for conditional approval for the project. I'd just like to read the, for the record, this is an amended site plan review application number 56, and you all have a copy of that application. And it's submitted by Cold Harbor Building Company on behalf of the property owner, which is the Auburn Vocational School District, for this public safety training building located at 10985 Girdle Road, also known as current parcel number 08-A-021-0-00-007-0. So, I will entertain a motion for conditional approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion for conditional approval based upon the staff comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Heather, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reppert?
Yes.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelies?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. You're conditionally approved.
Thank you.
Heather, do you have a timeframe before you'd like that additional information?
Do I?
Would you have a timeframe in which you would like that?
No, whenever, whatever, you can get it.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate you jostling.
No problem.
My dog will be happy.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Okay. So, that was our item for new business tonight. Now, we're going to return to our original agenda and the old business, which is to continue. We never actually closed the public hearing, but I'm going to reopen it officially. So, the public hearing is open, and obviously there's no public here to discuss with it, but let us discuss in this portion of the agenda, the changes that Heather gave us. And you have a handout of the revised wording that Heather gave us in a memorandum dated December 19th. And so, we're talking about, these are, these are eight amendments to what we discussed in December. And as we went through all the various changes that we were looking at, we came up with these eight items. And so, I don't know if we need to, Heather, do you want to highlight these, or do you want me to read them?
Oh, sure. I'd be happy to kind of recap where we left off at the last public hearing. So, if you recall, we went through the Lake County Planning Commission's recommendation pretty detailed at our, at the first public hearing, and there was consensus from the board to adopt some of the modifications within this amendment that were recommended from the planning commission. So, in, in the memo here, you can see what amendments these affected. Amendment number one, one of the modifications that you'll see in the revised text was we went through and made sure we were consistently using the terms preliminary development plan and final development plan. And then also, also as part of amendment number one, we did, we added that we wanted to clarify that the zoning inspector was going to be the one to decide whether or not there's a deviation. And also, we adopted the planning commission's recommendation on that slight change to the language in 1613H. And then, under the Second Amendment, which had to do with section 1614, the, we corrected the relabeling of the subsections A, B, and C. And then we also corrected a minor typo where we replaced the word proposed, uh, used propose in place of proposes. And then for the Third Amendment, the modification that is included in the revised text, we were, we had thought about what the planning commission had said regarding what we were going to modify was going to be in conflict with the county subdivision regulations requiring all the improvements to be built and accepted. So, we decided not to include that, which is the same thing under amendment number seven. We decided not to add that in because we don't want to be in conflict with Lake County. I don't know if you need me to go through any more detail. I know we went through what the specific amendments are at the last hearing.
We did. We spent a lot of time last year on these changes, and these were the final items that we thought we needed to put in place to clean it up for everyone's satisfaction on the zoning commission. So, I think that kind of concludes everything. You've got a copy of the marked-up changes as well. I think this is kind of what we were trying to get to as we went through this last year. Anybody have any concerns with it?
Yeah. In, in reading amendment number five?
Number five. Okay.
Modify section blanky-blank by referring to the zoning inspector instead of he. Is that what's there? Yeah, we do. Okay. You're right. You're right. Now I remember. We said he.
Took the word he out, right.
Okay.
That was, I think, your suggestion.
It was. Now that I read it, now, now I remember. He, she, we just put in zoning inspector.
Correct.
All right. I got it. It just didn't quite fit, but got it.
So, there's basically eight, like, major sections of section 16. And as our previous legal counsel had always recommended to us that we would vote on each amendment separately.
Okay.
With any of the ones that we modified originally, we probably should make the motions to reflect that it's, that we're approving it with modifications and list what those modifications are, which is part of the reason why I put the memo together, just to assist whoever was going to do that during the meeting.
Any more discussion on content? Okay, I guess I can, at this point, close the public hearing, and then we'll take a vote on approval, and we'll do it at one amendment at a time. So, with tonight's amendment, number one, can I have a motion for approval for that amendment?
Should you read it first? Should you read it?
I can read it. I think we just went through it, but I'll read it again. Modify, and that is, modify section 1613, approval by adding a new requirement that the approved preliminary plan is an integral part of the zoning resolution, and any deviations are considered zoning violations with the following modifications. Number one, revise section XBI throughout to ensure consistent use of the terms preliminary development plan and final development plan, revise section 1613H to include that the zoning inspector decides if there's a deviation, and also clarify language per the Lake County Planning Commission's recommendation. So, that's amendment number one. Do I have a, a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve amendment number one to modify section 1613 as written.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Frank. So, a motion and a second. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? I don't think so. Okay. We've approved amendment number one. Amendment number two, modify section 1614, Township Final Development Plan to have the zoning commission review and approve the final development plan in lieu of the trustees. Process and timeline for submitting final development plan is being taken out of this section and updated in section 16 dot 16. Review criteria is being added for the zoning commission to consider while reviewing the final development plan with the following modification. Number one, relabel subsections A, B, and C. Item number two, correct minor typo in 16 dot 1 for C2C proposed to replace purposes. So, those were the amendment number two changes. Motion to approve amendment number two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve amendment number two as written.
Thank you, Hyrum. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rich. A motion and a second. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Amendment two is then approved. Amendment three reads, modify section 1615 zoning permits by deleting reference to the trustees and adding the requirement that the proposed improvements must be constructed and accepted by the applicable agencies prior to zoning permits being issued with the following modification. Item number one, eliminate the requirement that the proposed improvements must be constructed and accepted by the applicable agencies prior to zoning permits being issued. So, that's amendment number three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve amendment number three as modified in section 16 point 15.
Thank you, Frank. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Hyrum. So, a motion and a second to approve amendment number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Okay. Amendment number four, modify section 1616. Modifications from an approved development plan by adding in new time limits and process for extensions on approvals. Clarification is made regarding modifications to previously approved preliminary or final development plans. That's amendment number four. Do I have a motion to approve that amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve amendment number four as written.
Thank you, Hyrum. Second?
I second.
Thank you, Frank. So... Thank you, Frank. So we have a motion to approve and a second, amendment four. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed. Item number five, modify section 1617A1 and 2 by referring to the zoning inspector instead of the word he. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Hyrum?
Do you want me to do that?
That's your baby.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and we approve amendment number five on modify section 16.17A1 and 2.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Rich. All in favor of approving amendment number five, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed. Amendment number six, modify section 16.29B Township Preliminary and Final Development Plan Review Procedures by deleting a portion of subsection B that states the final development plan approval for the township occurs simultaneously with the approval of the final plat. Motion for approval on amendment number six?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve amendment, amendment number six as written.
Thank you, Rich. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Hyrum. I have a motion to approve and a, a second for amendment number six. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No. No nays. Amendment number seven, modify section 16.30 zoning permit by adding the requirement that the proposed improvements must be constructed and accepted by the applicable agencies prior to zoning permits being issued with the following modification. Number one, eliminate the requirement that the proposed improvements must be constructed and accepted by the applicable agencies prior to the zoning permits being issued. A motion to approve amendment number seven?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve amendment number seven, modify section 16.3 as written.
Thank you, Frank. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rich. So I have a motion to approve and a second for amendment number seven. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And no opposed. And finally, amendment number eight, section 16.31, modifications by adding time limits and extensions. Do I have a motion to approve that item? Number eight.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve amendment number eight as written.
Thank you, Rich. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving amendment number eight, say aye?
Aye.
And there are no nays. So with that, we have improved, approved all of the changes. So now we have to approve the entire package, um, as changed, right, or modified?
Um, now we will transmit this over to the trust, the Board of Trustees. The Board of, these, the approvals that you guys are making tonight are recommendations to the trustees.
Right.
So they will have to schedule their public hearing within 30 days, a receipt of your recommendation. And they will have the final decision.
Okay.
Once they have their public hearing and vote on that, um, then any amendments will be effective 30 days after.
Okay, so we have no other votes for tonight?
We also, if you, the only thing we had was the approval of the minutes.
Well, we have other items on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the other items that we had under the, yeah, yes, correct. We are done with that portion.
Okay, we are done with it. Then, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, uh, which everyone should have a copy of from the December 5th meeting. Any discrepancies in those minutes?
Page 21.
Page 21.
Line 10.
And the discrepancy?
Well, it just didn't read right to me, but it comes in. So from my perspective, I thought it was cleaner just, okay, building everything than come and get. So from my perspective. And if I'm correct, Heather, that's your, your throat. The get just didn't seem to fit.
I'm sorry, I was not prepared. What page are you on?
Page 21, line 10.
And this was a comment made by legal counsel?
What I was referring to is that you would come in and then get the permit after. You would come in and get the permit. Yeah, I probably, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, it was Heather's comment.
Come in, just come in and...
Get their permit.
Get the permit?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I, I didn't want to read words in there, but either just come in and see what happens, or come in and get the permit, I, whatever.
Okay. So you're okay with that?
Talk to the person who...
I don't know if I said the permit. I don't know for sure, but that's what I was meaning, so.
Okay.
I thought you were thinking.
That's fine.
I didn't go back and watch the YouTube video, sorry.
Okay.
We can go back and say, come in and get the permit.
Anything else, Hyrum?
No, sir.
That's it, one, just one?
Yeah, just one.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the December 5th meeting.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as amended for the December 5th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Okay, so a second for that?
Second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, approved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Andy abstains, he wasn't here. All right, thank you. Uh, next would be correspondence. I'll start on my right. Rich, any correspondence?
Uh, nothing. It was past month.
Angie, anything?
No.
Okay.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
And I had nothing either, so no correspondence this one. The public participation portion is open and we have no public, so, uh, obviously nothing to be done there. And we've completed all of our new business and our old business. So anything else before we adjourn? Nothing?
I wish everybody a happy new year.
Okay.
Prosperous.
All right.
Healthy.
Thank you. With that, our next meeting is February 6th, 2024, and I will adjourn tonight's meeting.